Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, June 12th, 2023. I'm now calling the meeting to order at 6:30. Roll call, please, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Here.
Mayor Portem Elizabeth Verona.
Here.
Mayor Infante.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
Attention, gentlemen, please remove your caps, hand over your heart, and say with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. Let me start off with the Juneteenth, 2023 proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st of 1863 declaring the slaves of the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for passing the 13th Amendment, which formerly abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed two and a half years to June 19th of 1865 in reaching authorities in African-Americans in the South and Southwest United States. And whereas the Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest or in other parts of the nation. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to the African-Americans and is called as Juneteenth, combining the words of June and 19th, has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas there will be a Juneteenth celebration throughout the San Onofre Valley. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Mark Infante, along with the City Council, the City of Solvang, do hereby proclaim the day, June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the City of Solvang and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in the African-American history and the heritage of our nation and city. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Solvang to be affixed on this 12th day of June, 2023. Thank you very much. As another proclamation, June 2023 is Pride Month proclamation. Whereas the City of Solvang supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. Whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national organ, sexual orientation, or abilities, have the right to be treated equally based on their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the City of Solvang accepts and welcomes all people of all backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more inclusive and vibrant community. And whereas many local LGBTQ persons contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of the City of Solvang, as well as to the entire San Onofre Valley. And whereas we must acknowledge that education is vital to end discrimination and prejudice against everyone. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Mark Infante, along with the City Council, the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Pride Month. And I encourage all residents to celebrate the many contributions and achievements from the LGBT community and that enhance our beautiful city. And witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City to be affixed this 12th day of June. And I believe, Mr. Cavalli, you wanted to receive this proclamation. So let me do that. Okay, now, we are going to have public communications. These are non-agenda and consent items. So at this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda or consent item, consent calendar. Time limit is three minutes. We'll start with in-person public comments. But before we get started, allow me to make a couple of statements. Several of you here are here for the purpose of talking about the housing element of the general plan. It is not on the agenda. It's not a public item. We will not be discussing it, and we will not address your questions or comments. So if you want to make comments, that's fine. That's your privilege. Please do. But we will not be talking about them. Okay, at that point, at this point, then, let me get Mr. Sam Ursi, Bergy? Bergy, what did I get? I got the name wrong, I'm sure.
Hi, Claudia, Mark, David, Elizabeth, and Robert. I appreciate your due diligence on the housing element historically. A lot's been going on, a lot of comments back and forth. I wrote a letter to you and presented it to Sarah this morning. I'm hopeful that you got a copy of it. It addresses the traffic congestion at the... It has to do with the site C at the corner of Alamo, Potato, and Old Mission Drive, where there's going to be 109 units proposed, added. I see that a 50% increase in traffic will result at this intersection if the proposed development takes place. And I wanted to thank you for following the housing element that you proposed to the state of California. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Lee Rosenberg? No, I don't owe you any money.
I have witnesses. You wouldn't have been elected. Anyhow, this will be brief. Having experienced a few years ago some considerable violence in Solvang on a political issue, I wanted to be certain that every effort has been and will be made to create security for the July 4th celebration. I don't know, I haven't heard whether we're going to have fireworks. But either way, if there's a parade, I think it's really, really important to be careful, particularly at this time with what's going on in the indictment. So please do what you can, and I'm sure that Sheriff Valencia will be a part of that. And I feel very comfortable with that. But I think it needs to be more than one or two people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Gay?
Hello, City Council. Yes, my name is David Gay, and I'm the pickleball ambassador for the San Onofre Valley. And I want to, first of all, thank you for your support. If you were on the City Council two or three years ago when the two courts at the Hans Christian Ashton Park were constructed. They are used quite often. They're very busy. However, when they were built, and to this day, they were not completed, there still needs to be fencing, landscaping around the courts. Right now, it's just dirt and other things. And unfortunately, when the courts were built, there was expansion gaps put into concrete every 10 feet, as if you were doing a driveway or a walkway. And you do not do that on pickleball courts and tennis courts. Right now, those gaps are cracking. There's pieces of concrete coming up. When the ball hits it, it goes everywhere. So I've spoken to Roger, your Public's Work Director. He has spent a lot of time on this. And my understanding is there's going to be a capital improvement plan later this month, and included in that plan is going to be a request and funds in order to finish the pickleball courts and do them right. So I'm requesting your support for that. And as I was saying, the courts are very busy. I was down there last week. I mean, there's families playing. It's just not older guys like me playing. There's all kinds of families, and they're very busy. I don't even go in the mornings anymore because they're too busy. The point is, and we do free clinics to get more people playing, but we just don't have really the courts to support it. So along with this capital improvement plan, I don't know if there's requests in there for additional court, but now's the time to do it instead of waiting, you know, later on, two years from now, when there's just, the demand is only going to grow. And now's the time to put another third court in if it's possible to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Dan Martin?
My name's Dan Martin. I'm a life-long resident of the San Onofre Valley and a longtime resident of Solvang. I also am the president of Mission Oaks Owners Association. We hope that you had a chance to read our long and detailed letter regarding the housing element. After participating in the very public process that produced the draft sent to the state, we were disappointed to learn that the consent agenda vote by the City Council on May 8th to include the developers' proposal to rezone all of Site C and develop twice as much land and build three times as many units as the city proposed as an alternative to the city's EIR for the housing element. It is not clear that your council knew what it was doing at the point, as the developers' plan is not in your packet. Our understanding from legal counsel is that the city was not legally required to include the developers' proposal in the housing element. A Mission Oaks resident had to file a public documents request in order to see the developers' plan. We were also concerned to belatedly learn that the developer hired an attorney who wrote to Housing and Community Development on March 27th, asking HDC to deny the City of Solvang's housing element, quotes. The developer would eliminate the city's ability to develop its own housing element, disallow the City Council discretion, and ignore extensive public testimony by forcing the city to rezone all of Site C, including the problematic steepest parts that would be the most expensive to develop. Once again, it was necessary to file a public documents request to see a document of great importance to Solvang's future that members of the public should have been informed about. Our letter sent to you contained five important questions to the council that need to be clearly and fully answered. The city-approved plan sent on deadline to the state was a good plan. That would have added much-needed low- and very-low-income housing to the city. Mission Oaks urges the City Council to stand strong to support the city's draft housing element sent to the state, particularly as to limiting any rezoning of Site C to just the two and a half acres on the flatter land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen Waite?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Manager, Staff, Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, manager, staff, attorney. Karen Waite, 30-year resident of San Onofre Valley, resident of Solvang, former Solvang City Council member, also a resident of Mission Oaks Homeowners Association. I'm here to urge you to stay the course with the housing development element plan that you did send to the state. I am also urging you to not be intimidated and have the powers that you have to improve and watch and govern the city of Solvang and be intimidated by a letter from a developer whose interests are not taking into account the interests of the general public for the city of Solvang. So that's what I'm here to urge you to do. The letter that apparently many of you were not aware of, that was addressed to the state and not to the council by his attorney, does refer to individuals in our neighborhood as the derogatory term nimby. What I want you all to really understand is what may wind up in my backyard will definitely wind up in the front yards of Solvang and the Solvang residents. Everyone who drives down Alamo Pantato, anyone who drives up and down 246. So please, stay the course and do what you did. Stay with what you decided and do the right thing for the city of Solvang. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Stephen Martin, and I live at 698 Hillside Drive, also in the Mission Oaks subdivision. We appreciate the work you've put in on the housing element, and your work and your actions on the housing element will have and leave a legacy to Solvang for many years to come. We and Solvang have worked hard together for almost two years now to provide a housing element plan that realistically and safely promotes affordable housing while minimizing the negative impacts or permanent damage to our city and to its infrastructure. The housing element belongs to all of us. The staff and the consultants have worked and will work for all of us under your direction and your supervision. They will help develop and promote the plan. We are all in this together. We want to help too. We want to be part of it. It's not us against them in any sense of the word. We are not nimby's. We have agreed that there needs to be affordable housing, and we have agreed that the plan to put it near us on the flatter portion of the Site C is acceptable to us. But as our representatives, we believe that council is in charge of the housing element, and we believe and rely on you as council to defend the housing element and to do the hard work that will make it happen. There have been some rough edges about communication between council and certain members of the public. When we don't hear from you in a timely way, we don't know if you have received our communication or if you have had a chance to absorb it. Then we worry. When we find out by chance that the developer is having private detailed discussions with some of the city's staff about including in the housing element an alternative proposal that has been mentioned that is counter to the very wishes specifically expressed by the city, we worry. And when the request is granted with no notification or debate or public comment, we wonder what is happening. What we find out is that there has been a plan by the developer to protest or disagree with the housing element, force the city to meet his demands for increased zoning over the entire property. We would like to hear from council, if we could, that you all support and will defend the draft housing element. We ask you, please include us with your work as you go forward, that you please write to the state and defend the plan, and that you visit Site C, and please start talks and mediation with the developer. I have given some citations to other cities that have what they call split zoning, and we ask you to consider that.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you, Sophia Cheka, who we understand is leaving. She's a wonderful employee, one of your best, and it's a sad day to see someone like that go.
I agree. Thank you very much. Lansing Duncan?
Thank you, council members. Good evening. First off, I want to say I really applaud both of your proclamations. I think they're a very positive step for Solvang. We want to be a community that welcomes all. I do want to say that the concerns expressed by my fellow Mission Oaks residents are very real, and they're not just held by Mission Oaks residents. There are all kinds of residents who are on Old Mission Drive, who are on Alamo Pantato, who are on Vibor, et cetera, that will potentially be impacted. The five questions that we had stated in your letter really do need to be answered still, and they, I think, will give you some guidance as to where we think you might go in the future. They are, has the city commenced dialogue with the developer regarding a lot line adjustment? Has the city written to the state to rebut the developer's letter opposing the approval of Solvang's housing element? Why did the city wait over two months to disclose the developer's March letter to the state? And why hasn't it been made public? We had to file for a public documents request. What law, regulation, or other rule requires the city to submit any landowner's plan to be considered as an alternative in the environmental review of Solvang's housing element? And has the city discussed mediation among the parties as Steve just spoke? So those are things, I think, that might help clarify things. And I think what is really demanded here is some transparency, because there's an appearance that things were going on that the public and maybe even yourselves were not aware of. If you haven't seen this plan, the developer's alternative plan, you need to see that. If you haven't seen the letter which was written by the attorney for the developer to HCD, you need to see that. This is essentially a gun to your head. And I can see why that might motivate actions that are perhaps in self-defense, but maybe not in the very best interests of Solvang in the future. And you really do need to recognize our responsibility to notify Mission Oaks or any neighbors when these things are happening, especially when a project of this size relies upon an easement over Mission Oaks property. I can't understand how you could conceivably say that that doesn't require notification. We're more than willing to work with the city, develop the housing element we can all live with. We have shown a willingness to compromise, and we brought valuable knowledge to the process. But shutting out the participation of Solvang residents, whose community, and I mean all Solvang residents, will be impacted, is not an option. Haste makes waste. So thank you very much for your continuing efforts on a very difficult problem for our entire community.
Thank you, Lansing. Kyle Cavalli?
I'm going to share my time with Lauren as well from SYV Pride. I just wanted to take this little timeframe to just kind of focus on the celebration of what the proclamation means for us in our community. So Mayor and the rest of the city council members, on behalf of the Rainbow House, Inc. and on all of the LGBTQIA community, we thank you for the proclamation. Visibility, awareness, and inclusion is so important for the culturally diverse town that we live in. Let's use this moment, this proclamation, to bridge the gap between those things that might feel scary to those things that we just don't know enough about, and come together to celebrate unity, peace, and love. The community we live in right now comes from all walks of life, and with your proclamation, it tells those people, this community, that we are one. Together, we are better. Together, we are stronger, and we are one. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your time with me, Kyle. Hi, good evening. My name is Lauren Lastra. I am board president of San Onofre Valley Pride. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, we would like to say thank you to the city council for this proclamation honoring June as Pride Month in Solvang. To the LGBTQ+ residents and allies here in Solvang and throughout the San Onofre Valley, we celebrate with you, and we will continue our mission of creating a safe, supportive, and empowering home for all of us in the San Onofre Valley. We are honored to do this work alongside this incredible community and with other like-minded organizations such as the Rainbow House. We also at SYV Pride want to take a moment to pause and remember the 49 victims and countless survivors of the Mass Shootin' at Pulse, a gay nightclub, which happened today seven years ago. And it feels so important today to see the humanity in one another and rise above the anti-LGBTQ rhetoric and misinformation at the national and local levels. And tonight, it really provides us with an opportunity to see both, to lean into the mirrors and windows metaphor. It's so important for all of us, including my four-year-old in the back, to see themselves and their family mirrored back at them through public displays such as tonight. And it's equally as important that we have windows so we can experience and look into others' people's experiences different than our own. This is what creates bridges, compassion, empathy, and really strengthens the fabric of our community society. So thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it. Okay. Do we have anybody else that would like to make a comment, not on an agenda item? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment not on an agenda item? It doesn't appear that way. Do we have one? Oh, please.
Thank you so much tonight for tonight's proclamation. I wanted to thank you on behalf of Pacific Pride Foundation. My name is Kristen Flickinger. I'm the executive director. It is critically important, as you've already heard, that people can see themselves reflected in their communities, and it is important that their elected officials recognize their existence in the places that they live, work, and play. So thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Appreciate the comment. Thank you. Yes, we have another speaker.
No, that was it.
No, that was it? All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll take it back to the council, and we'll listen to the city manager's report, please.
I don't have a lot. I wanted to share, I've attended several functions locally. Couple of Fridays ago, I attended the San Onofre Valley Youth Rec fundraiser. That was quite an experience, a lot of fun. Got some good peanut brittle out of the deal, so that's great. Also, the following day, the senior center celebrated and shared its plant over at the Elbehoi Museum, and there was a gathering there. Last week, I attended the Chamer Mixer. And that's just a few of the things that I've done. I also wanted to share, I received a notice from Waste Management that they are going to be increasing our solid waste bills effective July 1 by the amount of 5.1% as allowed by the contract. And they have alternate years where they increase it, and last year, they did not. So this year, they are going to be increasing our waste collection bills by 5.1%.
We have a lot of funding to talk about this year.
Yeah. And that's all that I have for now. Oh, I also wanted to, now, 43 years ago today, I graduated high school, so it's mind-boggling to me that it's been as long as, and when you say it, it's like, ah.
But you got the GED, right?
Yeah. I walked with my classmates in San Jose. I still listen to the music that I listened to in high school. It makes me stay young.
You mean your music? That's what it is. It makes you stay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, when you mentioned the rates increase, is that residential and commercial?
I believe it's all rates, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did not know that. Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Council comments and requests. Comments?
Yeah, I would like to request to staff that we address the questions for the concerned residents about the development on Site C, particularly about why, you know, just answer the five questions. Transparency is very important for all of us, and yeah, that's it.
But is that on the agenda?
No, I'm just requesting it to be either answered. If not possible today, then...
Thank you.
No, not today. Great. Mr. Brown?
I have a few comments.
Microphone, please.
Check your mic.
Okay. I don't have my notes here. I'm getting some feedback from some constituents about Oak Street being pretty much the go-to thoroughfare and speeds along that route. So for safety purposes, I'd like to propose to our Public Works Department perhaps some rumble strips or something to slow down, and that's not just at Oak Street, but it's also at Mission, excuse me, Alisol and Vibor. If they would look into that, I'd appreciate that on their behalf. That's all I had.
Thank you.
I have a request, too. Those are really two solid requests, so would support both of them 100%. The mayor and I got asked to sit in on a update, countywide update, on the At Home program, which is addressing the homeless community with a new series of programmatic approaches. It's a very, I responded very positively to the program, and what's new about this program is that it is a new level of accountability driven at the county and city levels. So I'd like to ask, in anticipation of that program coming our way and the city being asked for a little increased roles and responsibilities in meeting the asks of that program, that we take some proactive effort on the legal review of our ordinances and our city codes related to overnight camping and related to our radiuses for no trespassing around city utilities, that we take a look at that and make sure we're up to currency with state law and any other, you know, sort of current activities with regard to homeless. I think it's been a while since we've touched that language, and we should probably review it so we come into that At Home program in the best form of readiness possible.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
I as well am getting comments about, I don't know if the entire staff or council have received the emails about the tents that are showing up down by the wastewater plant, and if that's being addressed, I'd like that to be looked into. And I have seen a lot of, I mean, pickleball has really taken off, as everybody knows, nationwide, and there's a lot of residents that really want to see these courts get finished at Hans Christian Anderson Park. And if we can look into what our timetable is and what funds we have to make that, the landscaping, et cetera, I think landscaping should be secondary, just to make the courts more accessible and playable. But I do tend to hear more about the pickleball courts, really earth-shattering stuff, but I apologize, but it's, these are residents' concerns, and it's about pickleball. So I just wanted to bring it up, that we could look into what our status is on the pickleball courts at Hans Christian Anderson. People that played there, I guess, a lot of them are playing at the Alisol now because the courts are much nicer. But if something can be done with those courts to make them a little bit more convenient for the residents, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to see if that was the council consensus to go ahead and take a look into the current anti-camping ordinances that we have.
Yes. Everybody agree? Yes. Five nodding heads. Council consent.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to follow up on a couple of the comments that were made. First off, Claudia Rona, councilwoman, I'll get this right in a minute. With regard to following up on the Lot C, June 28, 5:30 PM, there's going to be a hybrid meeting held by Rincon Consultants, who are the EIR consultants for the housing element. And so this will be the first chance, and this will be publicly notified, so that everybody that wants to know about what's happening with the projects and the alternates that have been proposed and things of that nature, there will be a meeting. It will be held here in this room, 5:30 PM on June 28. Okay? So we don't ignore these things, believe it or not. It just seems... It just seems that way sometimes. A couple of other comments, if I may. Wednesday, the 21st, the Chamber of Commerce is starting their Music in the Park. And I don't know about you, but every Wednesday, I like to go sit out there, glass of wine, piece of pizza, sandwich, something, I don't know, and listen to music. It's wonderful. The Chamber does this for the city, and I would highly recommend that you take advantage of that. It's going to be every Wednesday for six, eight weeks, I forget, Tracy.
Eleven weeks.
Eleven weeks, see? Thank you very much. Secondarily, I had the opportunity last Wednesday to meet with the Danish Ambassador of the United States. She was here to celebrate a ribbon cutting at the Copenhagen House. If you have not been to the Copenhagen House lately, I recommend you go by and take a look. They have a new Viking exhibit. They actually had a ship built, a boat, it's about 15 foot long, built by hand. This is axes and hammers, no power equipment, anything. They didn't do sanding, they used a hatchet. It's amazing. There's a film showing how they made this boat. It's in the Copenhagen House, and they have an exhibit over there with a whole bunch of Viking stuff. And just to add to the pleasure of having the ambassador here and people from the Danish offices, they have, they're bringing some art for the Getty Museum, so they came here. But she actually cut the ribbon with a Viking sword. Yeah, and you can't do this because it's a floppy ribbon. So she goes, and it sliced it beautifully. It was great. I had an opportunity to present her with a key to the city, welcome her and the other constituents from Denmark. And so I did want to bring that up, that the Copenhagen House is now, has that exhibit now available for anybody to go by and take a look. Okay.
Did the Lord Mayor come?
Uh, no. I did get asked questions about that. The father came, it's no surprise. You know what the biggest question was? Do you guys really eat sausages with abelskivas?
I've been hearing that for 20 years. It's not, they don't go together.
They don't put them together.
They do here, so it works.
We eat sausages with pancakes, so you know, what's the idea? Okay, with that, I think we've covered all of the comments from the city council. Consent items, then. Ms. Clark, if you would introduce that, please.
Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
Okay, we do not have any speaker slips for the consent agenda. Is there anybody in the room that had a comment on the consent agenda items? Or anybody on Zoom interested in speaking on the consent items? Okay, in that case, we'll bring it back to the council. Council, anybody have a comment or want to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
I have a comment. I don't wish to pull anything from the consent agenda, although I do want to just acknowledge or consider that this particular packet has a lot of expense increases in it, and it's got me paying very close attention to any expenditure that we have. These look like all expenditures, just to be clear for my peers in the public, that are going forward for contract extensions for the full year, and all my questions were answered by the staff. My second comment is, has to do with the inclusion of some marketing updates from social media and from the PR team. And I just want to thank the team for doing that extra work and providing some data and real-time results on how those efforts are going. Just to show you that I was looking at it, the Instagram trends look really awesome. It was great that we included the visitor center visit counts, because to be honest, I was worried about the weather, whether we were getting similar foot traffic and street, you know, visits to town. So it looks like those visits are consistent year over year, which is fantastic news. And the new Facebook looks great, and I just want to thank the team for doing all that work. And one more thing, thank you for the interlock with the other community, Visit California and Visit SYV organization. So thank you for doing a great job.
Anybody else?
Move to approve the items four.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Infante.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Let's go to item five. You have the public hearing to, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce it rather than me.
Public hearing to consider adoption of resolution number 231218, confirming and levying assessments for the solving Mesa Landscape and Lighting and Maintenance District number 2004-1 for fiscal year 2023 through 24.
Staff report, I believe.
My, my, the settings on my laptop seem to change on their own, so I apologize. I'll just go through the...
I'm surprised.
How's that work? So now we can put up the presentation.
Oh, good.
We switched the settings back, darn computers. So this is the presentation for the solving Mesa Landscape Lighting Maintenance District. This is the resolution for assessment and confirmation. So, again, we met last time around, and we left the public, the public hearing open because there was a hiccup with the advertisement. So we, it has now been duly advertised, so now we can, we can continue the public hearing, and then if council sees fit, so we can reconvene it now, and if council sees fit, we can, we can then close it and then discuss. So this is the map of Skid Mesa, or solving Mesa. And so the assessment process, the costs have been reviewed and the budget established for next year. The adoption of initiation resolution was accomplished on May 8, which initiated the preliminary engineer's assessment report. The preliminary engineer's report was approved, and we did set the date for the public hearing, which was May 22, but then we, again, we advertise it now formally for today, June 12. So the action tonight is to reconvene the public hearing and receive comments, discuss and provide any direction to staff, and if desired, adopt the resolution of assessment. That will then initiate the next steps, which is the assessment engineer coordinates with the state, the county tax assessor's office. The assessment is set on the property tax rolls and then funds are collected and transferred to the city. So the recommended for fiscal year 2324 assessment is $1,360 per parcel. That accounts for a 5% increase after no increase from last year. And this will cover the cost of the ongoing maintenance of the landscaping, the utility, and also any necessary repairs, which we're continuing, starting to see more and more of. And all 169 lots will benefit equally from the Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District. So the recommendation is to reconvene the public hearing and receive comments, discuss and provide direction to staff, and if desired, adopt a resolution. I will note that at the, at the last meeting, based on some comments received, we were asked by council to review the performance of the Bright View, which is currently ongoing. And we are also looking at, a discussion with the city manager was, we're looking at setting up a meeting with, probably at the Vet Center, Vets Hall, but with the member, we would invite the members of the Homeowners Association to a meeting after, basically after work, to discuss with them and basically hear from everybody, have an opportunity to say what's working, what's not, what other services would you like to see, and that sort of thing. Because it is their money that we're utilizing to the tune of $1,300, $1,360 a month, a year.
A year.
A month, yeah, that'd be kind of pricey. But we are, we are utilizing that money for their benefit, so we would like to hear from them to see. So that's what we're looking to do, probably. We're looking at maybe August, September, to be able to put that together. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're having to answer any questions.
We'll comment in a minute, but does anybody have questions on this? Yes, please.
When you say, you say homeowners or HOA?
It's the homeowner. There is no HOA.
Yeah, that's when you mentioned, you said homeowners association.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, where did that come from? Okay, the homeowners of Skid Mesa.
The homeowners, the homeowners that participate.
Correct, not the HOA, okay. I thought, maybe I was asleep when that got changed.
Brody and slip.
Understood, it's a common phrase. Thank you very much.
Just a question, Roger, thank you. Did you, you said the hearing you're targeting for August, or when? We don't have a date.
We don't have a date yet. We were looking at probably either end of August or early September is probably ideal is when we would do something like that.
Okay.
Got a lot going on over the next month and a half.
I did just want to point out that the 5% increase is in complete alignment with the 5% increase everyone else in the city of solving is already absorbing for the water rate increases.
This is not water rates, though.
It includes water.
Does include the water?
Yeah. The water, water rates for the irrigation is part of what gets paid for.
The irrigation, but not for the homeowner?
Not for the homeowner, not for their domestic use.
Right.
But for the irrigation, and not for their sprinklers on their backyard or their front yard, but the irrigation for the landscaping that is maintained by the Landscape and Maintenance Lighting District.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions, I should say? Okay, then let's take it out for public comment. Do we have anybody? We don't have any speaker slips. We have anybody that wants to comment on this item? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joyce Milliken. I'm a Skid Mesa resident, and I just wanted to, I've heard, I've read some of the notes from your meetings, and sounded there was some conflict about the service of Bright View. And I just want to say, my personal experience is I have sent emails to Andres Rubio, who is the contact person, for repairs or leaks or problems with being able to see or anything. I've probably put in five or six requests to him, and I get response that very same day, and I get it, it's fixed within 24 hours. So I've been very impressed with their responsiveness and their repair and just paying attention to things that we communicate. I think it's probably easier to complain about something that you see, but you may not be involved in trying to make it a better, better solution. So the fact that we have contact information for Andres Rubio, and he's so responsive, I think that if it's, if it's given to the residents to make that connection with him, I think that some of the complaints would probably be less.
Before you run off, may I ask, how did you get his name?
From the last group meeting that we had, the prior city manager.
Potentially are there residents that don't have that name?
Probably not. Although we have a Facebook page, and it's been, his email has been put out there numerous times, but...
That's excellent.
Yeah, so that's...
Glad to hear it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the info.
Anybody else in the audience here? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? I don't see any hands up, so I'll take it back then to the council. Questions, comments? No? I believe we need a motion on this item to approve the resolution.
I'll make a resolution to adopt resolution number 231218 for levying assessments for solving Mesa Landscape Lighting Maintenance Districts.
Check your mic.
Boink, let's start over. I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number 231218, confirming and levying assessments for the solving Mesa Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Arona.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Infante.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, if you would introduce item 5B, please.
Public hearing to consider second reading to adopt by title-only ordinance number 23-0367, amending Chapter 2, Fire Protection and Prevention of Title 10 Building Regulations of the Solving Municipal Code and adopting by reference Chapter 15, Fire Prevention of the Santa Barbara County Code, incorporating and amending the California Fire Code 2022 Edition and portions of the 2021 International Fire Code and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. For a staff report, we'll turn to the attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to point out that due to an oversight, there were a couple resolutions that were not included in the packet nor in the agenda description. So rather than try to include those at the last minute, we are recommending that the council go ahead and open the public hearing, take public comment, and continue the public hearing to June 26, at which time the council will then do the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Interesting.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from the council for what's going to happen? No? Public comment. Do we have any comment on this particular public hearing for this adoption by title of ordinance for the fire protection? No? Anybody on Zoom? Well, this is going smoothly, isn't it? Public comment then is now closed. Let's bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest you open the public hearing, and then you're going to continue that to the next meeting. So the public comment is just open for the purposes of making public comment.
Of making public comment? All right. Thank you. I'll get this right one of these days.
Do we need a motion, though?
Yes. We need a motion to continue the public hearing to the June 26 meeting.
Can we just second that?
That was a motion.
That was the motion.
Even though it was a question, it was a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
No.
Councilmember Claudia Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Infante.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Mr. Clark dislikes being obstreperous.
Usually, we're just extending the meeting.
Yeah. Can we go to item 6A, please?
Discussion and possible action to approve ad hoc finance committee recommendations for human services grant funding and approve mid-cycle budget modifications for fiscal year 2023 through 2024.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the public and council members. On June 27, city council adopted, city council adopted a biennial budget for fiscal years 22, 23, and 23, 24. The city is approaching its second year of that biennial budget. The two-year budget is revisited after the first year to allow staff and city council to revise the budget to reflect the involving needs of the city while maintaining alignment of the approved budget and priorities of the departmental work program. Once the city council approves, provides direction for the revisions and determines the amount of the agency grant funding, staff will bring back the final budget for approval at the June 26, 2023 meeting. The 2324 revisions include mandatory and required adjustments to reflect ongoing contract commitments and agreements, services, supplies, insurance premiums, and contracted services for police. In April, the staff reviews the budget to actual with the department and determine if adjustments were needed. On May 12, 2023, staff met with the ad hoc finance committee to review the human services grant funding applications. And with that, in your blue folder, there is a application that was missed that was sent to City Hall, and it went to the junk mail, and that is for the solving arts and And they are requesting $6,000. So that is not listed in my staff report at all. The committee recommended funding for Elbehoi San Ynez Valley Rotary, solving Chamber of Commerce, solving Danish Days, and solving Theater Fest should be included in the marketing budget. Staff also reviewed and updated revenue and expenditures, along with updates to the projected fund balances. On June 1... On June 1st, 2023, staff met again with the ad hoc finance committee, and the committee recommended all applicants, funding all applicant requests with a reduction to the Chamber of Commerce and solving Theater Fest. If the full council approved, solving Chamber of Commerce would receive up to $40,000 upon providing receipts for the maps. Solving Danish Days, up to $50,000 also upon providing receipts. San Luis Valley Rotary, up to $25,000 upon providing receipts. Bethany Food Distribution, up to $10,000 upon providing receipts for food purchases. Solving Theater Fest would receive $50,000. San Luis Valley Vetty Rescue, solving Senior Center, Attodag at Home. People Helping People in San Luis Valley Therapeutic Writing Academy would remain the same as requested. So if you want to consider the solving arts program, that will have to be discussed as well. The summary of the requests and what the ad hoc committee proposed is in table one. The total amount requested was $420,000, and the ad hoc committee proposed $310,000. Do you guys want to discuss the grant, the agency grant funding right now, or you want me to finish the staff report?
You have them separated, Wendy, for us to approve either or, right? Or both, so we could separate them?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion to separate them?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay, I'll move on with the staff report. A significant change recommended by staff is the revival of the Park and Recreation Department Park and Rec Director. This position will better fulfill the needs of the solving residents and bring programs and services back to an adequate level. As you may recall, the Park and Rec Department was fully funded pre-COVID, and then employees were laid off. Additionally, in fiscal year 21, 22, the Public Works Department was split into Public Works and Utilities, and then Parks was moved under Public Works. Staff also recommends the HR manager part-time benefited position, become a HR specialist full-time position, and the accounting tech position, become an accounting assistant position to better serve the needs for the Human Resources and Accounts Payable and Finance Department. The summary of the budget updates. The following section summarizes the updates made to the adopted budget since it was last presented to council in June 2022. The primary changes are mostly related to the general fund. The general fund revenues proposed for 23, 24 are projected to be $10,260,301 with an increase of $176,400, or 1.7% compared to the preliminary estimates provided in the approved financial plan. General fund revenue updates include increasing overall transient occupancy tax revenues and various adjustments to the other categories. Table two is the general fund revenue assumptions. Transient occupancy tax is going to approximately increase $129,450. Business certificates is decreasing by $14,000 due to, it was projected in the in the approved financial plan that the business certificates was a cost of, I think, $55, and it's actually, in reality, $34 because the code hasn't been changed. Grant revenue is an increase in $50,000. Special events revenue is decreasing $3,000. CD interest income is projected to increase $5,000. Sale of surplus property, fourth, is going to decrease $4,000 because we weren't going to, we aren't going to sell anything. Rec program discounts decreased $250. Recreation fees, $5,000 increase. Donations decreased $1,800. Grant recycling decreased $5,000, and vets building rental increased $15,000 for a total of $176,400. Table three for the fund revenues. Major use revenues projected to be 1.2 million and will be accounted for in Fund 2007, even though it's considered a general fund. That way we can keep track of the revenue and the expenses separately, but it will be considered part of general fund revenue. So the general fund revenue difference is $176,400, which we reviewed on the prior table. Fund 200 is increased $14,783. Fund 2002, sorry, excuse me, 2024 increases $44,783. Fund 204 increases $5,407. Fund 207 is 1.2 million. Fund 500 is $21,000 decrease. And Fund 502 is an $18,040 decrease. The table four below summarizes the updates made to the expenditures by fund. The difference category includes capital expenditures. And the no capital is the figures with the capital taken out of the expenses. The general fund has expense over revenue due to increase in the staff's contract of $531,000. Grant funding and budgeting for professional fees to cover the vacant positions, which are both included in the budget. So when we're looking at this, one thing to consider is that we have professional fees in the budget as an expenditure along with the staff expenditure because we have to use the professional fees to cover the costs until we hire the employee. So it's double dipping basically on the expenses, but that was the best way that we could show it. The water fund has an expense over revenue for acquisition of suspended table A water purchase for $820,000. This is, this gets covered, carried over from year to year, and it's for purchasing water, but we can't purchase water until the county releases it. And that is a discussion for a later time. The wastewater fund has expense over revenue until the rate increases catch up with the cost of service. So general fund has a difference in expenses of $622,129 with no capital expense over revenue, which as I stated before, is the $531,000 for the Sheriff's Department contract and grant funding, and then the budgeting of the professional fees and staff time. Fund 200 with no capital is $28,095. Fund 202 is $195,148. Fund 203 is $49,725. Fund 204 is $482,581. 2,005 is $5,192. Fund 207 is the 1.2 million. Fund 500 is $192,21. 501 is $79,814. 502 is $30,584. Fund 600 is $38,338. And 650 is $85,000, and Fund 700 is $10,000. So the total original budget is $25,97,000. The revised budget is $27,852.
Twenty seven million?
Million? Oh, sorry.
You said thousand, I think.
Oh, sorry. The difference with capital is 2.7 million, and the difference with no capital is 1.2 million. The general fund expenditures by the department in table five. Council is $737,36, which $531,000 is the sheriff's contract. Administration is $195,856. Planning and building is $168,634. Recreation is $101,148. Tourism, $175,666. Public works is $408,806, which is a total of 1.7 million. So table six shows the biggest change in expenses for each department. So council has the $531,000 for the sheriff's contract, the human services grant funding of 220. Administration software is $50,000. Planning and building is $180,000. Recreation is $154,903. Tourism, human service funding custodial Danish Days is $249,000, and public works professional services is $65,000. The summary of the full times for the general fund. The chart below shows step increases at a 4% anticipated cost of living amount as a reference. Negotiations will begin in July. The 4% increase totals $136,212.85. So with the change, we're looking at full-time total positions as 23 employees. The only new positions to be added is the Park and Rec Director. The HR specialist position and accounting assistant position are replacing the budgeted HR part-time position and the accounting tech position. The summary of the projected fund balance for 23, 24 General fund will be 4.6 million. Water fund will be 3.4 million. Wastewater, now these include the capital projects. So if we don't spend the money for the capital projects, then these totals will differ. So for wastewater fund, 2.39, 2.39 million, 995,000. Transit is 1.3 million. Government fees is 1.5 million. Traffic safety is 3,497. Gas tax is 37,000. Local transportation fund is 417,000. Measure A is 453,000. Skid Mesa is 388,000. Vehicle equipment pool is Fund 600. That's 1.1 million. And Oped Trust Fund is 1.1 million as well. And then the T bid is 76,877. That was for 22, 23. For 23, 24, the projected fund balance is 217,000. For local transportation, Measure A is 24,000. Sorry, Fund 204 is 343,000. Skid Mesa is 383,000. Measure U is 1.2 million. Vehicle equipment pool is 1.2 million. Oped Trust Fund is 1.2 million, and T bid will be 66,887. The GAN appropriation limit and the revised tenure capital improvement plan will be presented at the June 26th city council meeting. The alternatives is for city council may modify the existing revisions or deny all changes, and staff will implement the approved budget from June 27th, 2022. The physical impact, the overall fund surplus will decrease by 1.2 million, but will still remain in a positive fund balance of 1.2 million. And what are your questions? I'm sure there's lots.
Are we going to test it on this?
Yes.
Oh, start over.
Hey, we have to find an easier way to take a look at some of this data. We are going to have a financial review coming up. You said the next couple of meetings, when is this, June 26th?
That will be for adoption by resolution
Okay.
of the changes that we discussed tonight. Unless there's questions that we can't answer, then we'll bring that back, and we can talk about it more, but still have the plan to approve it.
Are we going to have a public budget meeting that's going to break all this down?
No, because it's already been approved back in June 2022. When we go to do it next year, then we will.
Then we'll have the next one?
Yeah.
So they can come to the meeting when we do make the final approval and make their comments. I am sorry, if I may, I just got to, the live feed is not working. It's on. The live feed is not working. I'm getting.
So YouTube has been working for a while, Vimeo and the city website is live.
Okay, thank you.
And the public access channel.
Comcast is working then, channel 23? Yeah.
I was just getting information that the livestream is not working. Verbatim was.
Doesn't work.
But the Vimeo and the Zoom are working.
That dog won't hunt.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah, livestream not working, or YouTube.
All right. Other questions for staff?
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out that the process tonight is really to get feedback. This is working with the ad hoc committee. So this is an opportunity for the full council to see what were the recommendations, what the, what the impact of the changes were. So we're hoping to get feedback from you tonight if you want to make any changes to these recommendations, to the grant funding, to any of the staff recommendations regarding replacement of certain positions. And we'll take that direction and put it into the process on June 26th, where the board will come back before the council for adoption.
Okay, so the one thing that we do have to add in was the accidentally omitted arts and music.
Right.
What was it, $6,000, I think it was, was the request?
Yes, $6,000 even.
Okay.
Can we modify our table? I know the ad hoc committee did a lot of work there, but is there room? Since we didn't deny any of the applicants, can we fine $6,000?
I suspect, but.
Wendy's saying yes.
Yes.
Was this, was this, it is on. Bring it a little closer. Regarding the numbers that you have, number one is, was the most recent request from the for the grant, solving arts and music, is the first I've seen it. So was it, was it delivered on time?
It was delivered on time. It was delivered on March 31st, but it went into the junk mail.
So by no fault of theirs?
No.
We're seeing, thank you, I want to make sure of that. And your numbers in the payroll, does that assume a marketing individual?
Yes.
We had a marketing individual there? I don't think so, did we?
It is, it's a marketing manager.
A marketing manager is.
Right below the first yellow lines.
Is one line below the shaded box.
Mm-hmm. Right below the HR specialist.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions on that, since we're right on that topic, if you don't mind. I realize we're reinstating some positions that were, I think, rolled back or put on hold during COVID. Is that correct, Wendy?
They were, the Park and Rec Director was, he retired. And then the, the part-time HR manager and the accounting tech position, those positions are approved. They were approved in the budget, but it just doesn't work with the finance department. It's my opinion that a full-time HR specialist position is more beneficial along with a lower-position accounting tech position because the HR, the past HR employee, she was doing HR and accounts payable. And it just didn't work real well.
The thing that jumped out at me was the large dollar amount for the Parks and Rec Director, especially in compares and contrast to the marketing manager budget. I'm looking at the burden budget with salary and benefits. So did we have that director of Parks and Rec in the two-year budget planning process?
That was not approved in the two-year budget. That's why it's a new position.
Net new incremental $200,000.
Yes, and that's, we based that on the prior Park and Rec Director, what his range was. And we put it at the beginning step.
At the lowest part of the range?
Yes.
Okay, beginning step. We got familiar with the steps on the marketing discussion. Okay.
Yes.
I struggle with this because in comparison to marketing manager, where their correlation with revenue generation for the city is really much more significant in a marketing manager position than in Parks and Recs. I know we get revenue, but not for services.
It's recoup.
Yeah. Thanks. So I, I, given that everything else on us is increasing, in particular sheriff, which I know we need to get to, and we just heard about wastewater increase, so many, it feels like a death by a thousand, you know, paper cuts with all of the increases, much like everyone else is feeling these days. I think we need to be as conservative as we possibly can.
Good point. Good point.
Okay, here's my question, I'm going to segue on that. What does hiring a park and rec director get us, given that we already have a recreation supervisor, not recreation coordinator? What is the need that is, that we're trying to fill there?
The park and rec director will take back the parks department, and it will, that position will fulfill the needs and be able to give the residents the services that they have been missing. The parks, the parks, like the pickleball courts and stuff, that, that tends to be put on the, the not, not important enough position. And they, with the two positions that they have now, it will just, they're, they're grasping to keep everything moving along and getting all the work done. And when they had the parks and rec director position before, it, that department just worked. It worked smoothly.
If I may add to that, too, right now, a lot of that work is being handled by our city engineer, Roger. And he's got this much work and this much capacity, so he needs a little bit of support. Needs to have some of that taken off of him, I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is it the city, Public Works and Jenny McClurg, or just Public Works that's taking over these responsibilities?
Well, Jenny has always been there. She takes care of all of the individual stuff that's going on. But when you got, when you talk about the pickleball court and having to take care of that.
That's under the Public Works umbrella, yeah.
It goes, it goes over to Public Works.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Please.
When you say the park and recs in your report, and I appreciate what, everything you do, Wendy, when you say the park and works director retired, are you talking about Fred?
Yes.
Retired or was laid off?
Well, both. I mean, he was laid off, so he retired.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I want to make that clear. I don't, I don't, I don't think he.
Prior administrator.
Wanted to retire. That's either here nor there, but I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same person. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we interrupted. Did you have more?
I'm just trying to get some clarity for what the position does. As far as parks and rec not raising enough revenue to support itself, park and rec is never gonna, it's one of those departments that you're never going to make enough money to be self-sustained, attainable, that is subsidy. If, if residents had to pay for all of these amenities and all of these classes and all of these services that are available, they wouldn't be able to afford it. And the only reason why many of us are here is because it was invested in the public to have these programs. But I do want to get some clarity, what is this person going to do and how is it going to make our programming better? Because we, it's nearly two hundred thousand dollars. Why, if it's worth it to spend two hundred thousand dollars on somebody, on staff that's going to be more efficient grade, but that's also two hundred thousand dollars that could go to programs that are available to people, you know, in parks and rec. So I just want to understand that.
Mr. City Manager.
As Mr. Mike Mayor mentioned, it has to do with bandwidth, it has to do with capacity. In my six weeks, six-plus weeks here now, I've observed a lot of. I'm second longest tenure city manager, right? No, just kidding. Anyway, the, the point is that, that it has to do with, with ability to get things done. As already been discussed, things like the pickleball courts unfortunately take a backseat to the demands associated with other things when people are wearing multiple hats. And as we learned earlier, our public works director, at least on an interim basis, is going to be taking an additional responsibility, so to the extent we can alleviate, at least temporarily, to, that we can help alleviate some of that concern. My observation in office and, you know, human resource position, although it hasn't been discussed, I think it's important to, to go back to that. Wendy spends an inordinate amount of her time dealing with human resource issues, the replacement of staff, making sure people are, got all the trainings and things they're supposed to be doing, and files are in place, and some of these things are just not happening. So it seems like a lot of money in some respects, but I think it's money well spent if it keeps us out of the line of fire regarding some of our regulatory compliance things.
It's also, that position is also responsible for getting grants. There are, there are county, state, and, and, and federal grants for recreation, and we need somebody that tracks all of those as well. So there is a payback to that, to a degree. I couldn't tell you how many, what we get in, in grant money, but, but that's available out there. So it's, there's workload, there's potential for getting additional grants. I, I, I think we, we need the person personally. That's my opinion.
No argument, we need a person. I don't know if it needs to be director level. I guess I would ask the staff to revisit the budget that we have for these positions. In particular, we've got, if we just look at recreation in general, you have two other positions that are well over, a recreation supervisor and a coordinator, one that's approaching two hundred thousand and one that's well over a hundred thousand. My only point is that if we, if I just stack rank what we're publicly paying these individuals, it's pretty clear you're prioritizing parks and recs over marketing. And I don't know if that's the message we want to send to potential candidates. Potential candidates, you're going to open a requisition for director? Is that correct? You would hire somebody net new?
For park and rec?
Yes.
It would go out to.
Right. So, so, so we're going to request candidates and resumes and so forth. At the same time, we've requested marketing manager, we might have a similar candidate with similar skills, simply, which would be great for marketing, but go for parks and rec because they're going to make two-third, or thirty percent more in earnings. And I just have, I'm really struggling with the value that role delivers back to the city in comparison.
Apples and oranges?
It's, it's, in my opinion, it's a tough one to call.
Because it's, it's the residents, we owe, we owe certain services and amenities to the residents.
Right.
Yet we understand where our bread is buttered.
Right.
Where do we draw that line? Where do we make our priorities?
Here's the other question for you.
Go.
Have we decided we're going to have a marketing manager?
Hmm, good point.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. Have we decided we're going to have one?
Yes, it's me.
It's. You, you.
Coming attractions.
With your PR skills, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Touche.
Moving right along.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out, too, these numbers are not the salary. This is combined salary and benefits.
It is.
Approximately a third of that is related to, to the overhead and PERS, those kinds, you know, medical benefits, those sorts of things.
They're not pulling as much home. This is what it costs.
This is what it costs the city, but it's not actual pay to the.
Gotcha.
Person.
The baseline's really important, too, because we are obligated to cost of living increases or percentage increases year over year. So just ask you again to revisit that and be as conservative as we can. I, what I also think, I believe, is that so far, all of our projections on measure U are holding at one point two. So maybe we have some flexibility here, but we don't know for sure, and we still haven't resolved a pretty difficult issue with regard to the sheriff's contract. So we have to be careful.
Yeah. Because one point two or not, we're having, we're getting very close on our budgets. So we have to be a little bit more aware of what's going on. Okay, we're drifting a little bit. Any other comments or questions for the staff? Then let's go to public. We have any public comments? Yes, ma'am, please come to the podium. Oh, thank you, I didn't see these.
Hi, Jillian Knight. I just wanted to, actually, since you're talking about the parks and rec position, I wasn't planning on speaking, but as someone who does hiring and recruiting as an operations consultant, I think you need to look at your comparables in your, in your neighboring cities. And Santa Barbara, when I just looked at their public salary list for a program director, ranges from about fifty-eight to eighty-nine thousand. And so I think we have to look at those nearby cities and what that entails and how many people we're actually representing here. Obviously, cost of living is an issue, but I do think we need to look at that as well as whether it can be a hybrid role. I do agree with Elizabeth in saying that there would be a competition, and in seeing how we are operating, or I, my business operates, in finding people for nonprofits and various organizations locally, if you have one that's even three percent more, you're going to have people apply to that, whether, and even if they only fit half of the checkmarks of the qualities that you want versus in the other positions. So I do think looking at other cities and comparing those would be a good option as well.
Good point.
Thank you very much. Linda Mazzulla?
Good evening, city council and people of solving. I am here to speak about our request for funding for the Tuesday food distribution at Bethania, and that's the next item on the agenda. Did you mean to call me?
This. Yes.
Yes, okay. So I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the staff voting to support our food distribution. We are an all-volunteer food distribution that's been operating since March of twenty-twenty. More than fifty percent of our clients live or work in solving, the rest are Valley residents, Los Alamos residents, some are Long Poak residents, some are Santa Maria residents that work in the vineyards. Because we are all volunteer, all funds donated to us go directly into the program. There are no salaries paid, there's no overhead expenses, the church does not receive a dime of this. And this is a non-denominational program. It's run by members of Bethania. My co-coordinator, Donna Hinsbick, is here, and so are some of our volunteers. You guys want to wave? Thank you. We have a great diversity in our group. We have Bethania members, we have mission members, we have Mormon members, we have Jewish community members, we have people who have no religious affiliation. And so it's really wonderful that we can all work together to benefit our community. And in fact, Councilman Brown has helped us at one point in the past during COVID, so thank you. Right, currently, we have one hundred and fifty-three volunteers on our roster, and usually, weekly, we run about forty that show up. And it's a lot of work, but it brings us a lot of joy because we know we are helping people who really need help. And the majority of these people live and work in solving, are connected to solving, or provide services that benefit everyone who lives here in the San Inez Valley. We would not have the life we have now if we didn't have these lower-wage earners making life easier for all of us, being our bussler in the restaurant, or cleaning our houses, or, you know, doing our landscaping. So it's, when we first started this in March of twenty-twenty, because of COVID, we had already been getting hit up a lot for food from people who were suffering, and then the COVID thing really hit. And we have learned, as people ask me, why are you still doing it? COVID's over. Well, COVID may be over. This is the best well-hidden issue in the San Inez Valley, how bad the food insecurity is here due to high rents, high cost of living, low wages. So it's shocking to me that in this beautiful place, we have people who are hungry and kids who are hungry.
Thank you.
So I appreciate your support, and I hope that you will grant us the funds. If you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Wong?
Hi, I'm David Wong, and well, how long have we lived in the valley here? It's six years, and I feel so young amongst you guys. I mean, people I've worked with and so forth have been here their lifetimes and their families before them and so forth. But I'm one of the volunteers Linda has spoken about, and I just love working for Bethania because it, it does such a service. And so what I'm going to talk about, and she calls me her numbers guy, and what you have before you is basically the first five months of this year. Do you guys see the slides?
We have the slides?
I had, I just handed them out. Can you hand them to the council members now?
Because we cannot, because this is public, and it's not introduced to the public in advance, we cannot present it to, to us.
Okay, then I'll just have to sort of walk you through it.
That's fine.
At the beginning of the year, we had approximately, I would say about seven hundred individuals that we've been serving, and it's been slowly coming down. Now, unfortunately, towards the end of March, it started to go up drastically. And around the beginning of April, we hit about a thousand individuals that we have been serving every week. That's a thousand people that we feed weekly, basically. And we peaked out at eleven hundred. And this number has been up there, as Linda has been indicating, that it hasn't been coming down like we'd like to see. And so I think what we need to do is continue to feed these people who, as she has mentioned, work and live in the valley and make such a contribution. And I think one of the big ironies that Linda didn't mention, I like to mention this, these are the people that may be working in the fields that are actually giving food for our tables, and yet they go hungry. So I think it's so ironic that that's the situation. So I beg you to please endorse this grant, and ten thousand dollars will mean a lot to our program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you have anybody else that wanted to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Scott Ko, the executive director of the Solvang Theater Fest. And when you're considering our grant request, when we came out of first COVID and then our ten-month construction project, our promise to the city and our promise to the city council was to increase programming. And not just increase the number of programs, but increase the diversity of the programming and increasing attendance in a wider sector of the community. So we kind of set the goal of looking at the whole programming in four ways. First of all, headliners, second of all, community outreach, also family-friendly and diversity. So as far as the headliners are concerned, we have sold out the theater three times since we reopened from construction. But we've also done some amazing things on the family-friendly side as well. In fact, one of our sellouts last year was a stunt dog experience. And one of the things this grant allows us to do is to keep prices low. So in that particular event, we had adults for twenty-five dollars and kids for fifteen dollars, and we sold out the place. It was an incredible show, we're bringing it back next year, and we actually hope to have two shows next year for the stunt dog experience. As of the first half of this year, we have sold probably twelve hundred more tickets than any year that I can see on record for the entire year. So you can see that the promise has been there. We've had four springtime concerts on stage, we've never done that before. Surprisingly, we had to battle the weather this year, but we started in late March. Unfortunately, one of the events was canceled. Our summer in the gardens program series, which used to be four concerts, is now eight. And we have five other events planned for the, for the fall that we haven't even begun to sell tickets for yet. So our commitment is there. Bringing diversity in allows us to really bring a wider variety of people. And I would bet that probably seventy percent of the people that we sold tickets to this year experienced the theater for the first time. So we certainly appreciate all the dynamics of what you guys consider in these grants, but it's a huge part of our funding, and we really feel that our commitment pays off in so many ways for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
I put in a card.
I'm sorry?
I put in a card, but I can't speak.
We, yeah. But you spoke, so I thought you were done.
Oh, no, that, for the, for the grant as well.
All right. Would you like to speak again? Is that what I'm hearing? Sure.
Again, I'm Jillian Knight, operations consultant and volunteer board member for the San Inez Valley therapeutic writing program. And thank you for putting forth this offer of grant monies for these wonderful nonprofits here in our community. We have so many. And we're very lucky to have an opportunity to serve mentally and physically challenged adults and children here locally. Almost half of our students come directly from solving for our weekly students. They range from, you know, five years old, eighteen years old, and then we have an adults group as well as.
group as well as our senior group that comes weekly. We will be having summer programs again. We have a focus on mental health as well as our Vandenberg Space Force program, and we have our Hidden Wings program that we do weekly as well. So these funds not only help us continue helping adults and children in the community with these challenges, it also allows us to expand programs. And some of the things we're focusing on right now is, again, bringing back the Mental Health Program as well as our United Way Fund in the Sun, which is new this year for us. It's been a little bit since pre-COVID, and we are back to pre-COVID numbers with goals of increasing. We will be serving an additional fifty seniors this year with our Travels with Teacup through the Solvang Senior Center, Attar Dag, and we just took the, although not Solvang, just took her over to Attar, or I'm sorry, Golden Inn. So that is one of our focuses as well. So thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate any help you can give us, and we're glad to be here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Jodi, you look like you are dying to say something. Please come up.
Thank you. I'm Jodi Williams, the President of the Solvang School Arts and Music Foundation. I know that you haven't had a chance to look over our grant application thoroughly since it was misplaced in the email. But some background on our organization, we fund all the music and arts programs at Solvang School, which is around six hundred students. We just finished the school year on Friday with a very vibrant arts and music programming to fill out the winter and spring concerts, which is TK through fifth grade, and the upper campus band. We had our talent show, the Show Shows, which was twenty-four acts of singing, dancing, guitar, piano, poetry. It was a really, really magical night. And we did Legally Blonde this year with our drama teacher, which was really, really well-done. So what is lacking a little bit at the school right now is the upgrades or the equipment, the stage and sound system. So this grant request is to upgrade some of those pieces that have aged. I worked with Mike Byron, the Facilities Manager at the school, to ask him what is his dream list of upgrades, and so that's what you see here in this grant, broken down here, and it comes to six thousand dollars. The school also is happy to have a mutual facilities use agreement with the city. Our parking lot is full every weekend with tourists that are very grateful to find a place to park close to downtown. The school actually kind of serves as almost a park on the weekends as well. I live right across the street, and tourists and residents alike are over there playing football, picnicking. So the school is very happy to see it get used like this. Another thing that the school is happy to do is open up its gymnasium to other city performances. In the past, we've had the Danish Gymnast, some other musical acts, and these have all been very well-attended. And so these upgrades will also benefit all of the residents in ways like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Ellen Albertoni, Solvang Senior Center Director. Thank you for your support every year. Sorry I didn't fill my slip out. But I just wanted to come up, and I was thinking, as I sat there in the audience, most, all of your nonprofits, we all work together in one way or another. We've used therapeutic writing. Bethania Church has helped us out. We help them out. Attar Dag Village supports us. We support them. It's just all, we're all a one big, wonderful family. And with that one big, wonderful family, we continue to grow, and our membership continues to grow. Our activities, which are really, really important for our seniors, to be able, our active aging adults, excuse me, to be able to come together and meet with people and have some stimulation in their life, new friendships. Your funding helps us, aside from food and so forth, which obviously is important, but having people come and join together is just really almost as important as it is filling up their plate and filling up their stomach. Something I would like to share with you that's very important for you to know, is we've increased our classes, we've increased our activities, but within those activities, we serve people fifty-five through our oldest active senior and truly as active as a hundred and one.
Wow.
We don't have that many young, active aging adults, but that's what we want to keep growing because those will help our seniors, our older seniors. But we have two ladies who come every month. One's one hundred years old, and she's fully active in our book club, and I mean fully engaged. She knows, she reads the whole book, she carries on the conversation. We have one lady who comes once a month for our ladies-only bridge. She's one hundred and one. She comes dressed to the nines. She lives at Attar Dag. Someone brings her up, she has lunch, she plays everyone under the table, and she leaves. And that, thank you for your support, helps us enrich folks' lives. Do you have any questions?
I have a question for staff. I know, see a request from the Senior Center on our funding.
It's probably under San Ynez Valley.
Senior Advisory.
Senior Advisory Council.
Solvang Senior Center.
Ah, it's up here. Ah, there we go. Never mind.
That's our, yes.
I thought we missed you so.
You're there, Ellen.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Terrible time to have a sciatic issue. How do you still? Hi, Mayor, Council, and everyone who's participating. My name is Christine Frankie, and I moved to San Ynez last year, and I was hoping to find a meaningful nonprofit to work for, because that's my background, and I found it in Veggie Rescue. I just joined the team two months ago. I am the Director of Development and Communications. We also have a new Executive Director who started last week. Her name is Judy Taggart. You'll get to know her as well. The mission of Veggie Rescue, everyone has actually touched on the fact that we do have an issue with food equity and accessibility in the valley, but yet we have all this food. So Veggie Rescue, the goal is to improve the nutrition and quality of life of community members by making nutrient-dense food and high-quality prepared food available. And so, and also, it doesn't go to waste because it's being used, which is fantastic. And we do this with our unique, flexible food access model. I'm sure that you've seen the refrigerated trucks with the big carrot on the back. Those are cruising around and helping us bridge the gap between farmers and people who are being helped by all of these amazing nonprofits. Veggie Rescue is the only nonprofit in the county that is actually focused on rescuing and delivering locally grown, fresh produce. So that, just to add to what others have said, we rely on hundred percent contributions too because it literally fuels the truck and the drivers and what have you. And so those things are, our vehicles are in motion every week for the county, the valley, and most importantly, Solvang. We partner with many of the people who are here. We bring the fresh produce to People Helping People, Santa Ynez Mission, Solvang Senior Center, Buellton Senior Center, Bethanan Lutheran Church, and Attar Dag at Home, just to name a few. So to her point, we are all working really closely together, and so many of these things look like they overlap, but it's all part of this amazing food network machine. So we are very appreciative of your continued support so we can keep that truck moving. The money's moving forward. Just so you know, in 2022, we rescued and delivered three hundred and ten thousand servings of fresh produce. So that's a lot. That's a lot of, just in Solvang and the surrounding communities that I listed. So that does make a huge impact. We know that we can double what we're doing because our trucks are only out part-time. We, our operational structure actually would allow for us to rescue more because it's out there and we know it, and we know that there are more and more people coming. I didn't realize I was supposed to look at that. So all I will say is, in closing, if you wouldn't mind, some of the rescued food, we have been working at a community kitchen up in Los Alivos, and we have volunteers that get together twice a week. And the vegetables, before they go bad, we've all had it happen in our refrigerator where we open it up and go, oh! So before these things lose their nutritional value, we have been making soups and side dishes. And I just want to give a shout-out to Claudia Orano because she is actually one of the people who helps us decide what we're going to make when we see what we have in front of us on any given Friday. So thank you for that. The thing about the making of the dishes is that it takes down another barrier for people who might not have a home and are being challenged in other ways because it's ready to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'll practice next time.
Do we have anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Erica Jane Flores, a proud fourth-generation San Ynez resident and employee in Solvang. I wear many hats, but tonight I'm wearing my People Helping People. But like many of us, our worlds intertwine. I just came from a school board meeting, and so education is at my heart. And for the last two weeks, we've been celebrating graduations, People Helping People staff throughout our community, the high school, our elementary, and even kindergarten promotions. And when I go to those, of course, I reflect on education and my heart for that, but I also think about what it means that People Helping People has been the heart of this community and brought heart for the last thirty-one years. And as I celebrate our seniors going across the stage, I think about their stories. I sit in a seat where I'm seeing, I know those students. I know when we were bringing their families fleeing from domestic violence to the safety of a hotel. I know when I see their parents in our food line. I know when I see a student surviving human trafficking in our counseling services. And so I, in the seat, what we talk about what's hidden is not hidden at all. And when we celebrate graduations, I realize that there's a lot that happens in the classroom and out of the classroom to make it happen. I also think about myself, that when I moved back here four years ago, moved to Solvang, single mom, working at Solvang Theater Fest, where now I sit on the board, and at eighteen dollars an hour, I couldn't pay my rent. And when I first walked in through People Helping People, it was for my appointment to receive services, not a handout, but a help-up. It got me to a job at UCSB full-time, and when I had the opportunity to return to the community, I did. So I want to say thank you, first of all, on behalf of our community, on behalf of our board, on behalf of our staff, and on behalf of myself, a Solvang resident that you helped, and my daughter too. So thank you. As a glimpse, just in the month of April, People Helping People has served thirty-three unduplicated clients, not just in food, but in actual case management, twenty-three rental assistants, and a total of four hundred and eighty-five unduplicated clients throughout the year. This is Solvang. It's no mistake that our agency's headquarters are right down the road at Maple and Aliselle. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tracy Beard with the Solvang Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to say thank you very much. We truly understand the budget cuts that you're having and what is going on. We just want to let you know, this year through the pandemic, we've brought in four-point-two million dollars to businesses. We've been able to help two-hundred-and-seventy businesses this year with ERC, the Employee Tax Credit Program. If you don't know what that is, that is something that brings businesses anywhere from fifty-thousand dollars, and one of them has been over a million dollars this year because of the number of employees based on your quarters, your credit's at five thousand dollars per quarter. And we know many of our businesses still have less than forty-five days to start applying for that, and they have not been able to get into queues. We know accountants are charging a lot of money. This is something we do for free for our business community. We also know that we have worked very much on getting our marketing when we had other service agencies could not do. We know we have approximately thirty-six hundred on ours. It is in our PowerPoint that I've sent over. And in our chamber statistics that we've done this year, we've had one million nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine, one-hundred-and-sixty-three that have come through. They're called unique views that have come through of the chamber, and then they go to other sites. So we feel the chamber's been very vital in this. We understand, we thought we were on a two-year budget cycle. We understand the, just of how budgets do need to be cut, and there's so much up here. I come every single two weeks. I understand what you face. I'd like to consider the fifty thousand. If not, I very much appreciate the time and the service we work with you and deliver my report to you. And I just want to say thank you all for the service that you do for our community, and we are, Phil, we have been your economic development chamber through this whole pandemic and what we have served to this community. And we know right now, some of our grants are coming through with Lundistry right now for a second round, and we've been able to execute that. That has not been done at any other chamber, and we were the only Chamber of Commerce to receive PG&E grants this last quarter when no other city received them, and we worked hard for that. So we feel we put money in the community in our pocketbooks for our businesses. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Westwood. I'm the Executive Director of the Friendship House here in Solvang, but I am here on behalf of the San Ynez Valley Rotary, which I am a proud member. The San Ynez Rotary Club is the oldest club. We've been here sixty-three years. And some of the projects that we do that you're probably familiar with is we distribute dictionaries to all the third graders in the valley. We coordinate the high school architectural competition. We take Santa around the valley every Christmas and Santa slay. We help fund the Sunny Fields Park and volunteer to clean up and keep down the expenses each year. But we're mostly known for the Fourth of July Fireworks Celebration, and that's what I'm here for today. Over twenty-five years ago, the San Ynez Rotary Club conceived the Fourth of July Fireworks Festival as a safe alternative to having to drive to Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, or Long Poak. The event has grown since, over five thousand attendees, which may be the largest event in the valley. And we've done a survey a few years ago. It's approximately seventy-one percent of the attendees are from outside of the valley. So it brings in tourism and promotes tourism. This is our only fundraiser. Last year, we netted a little over eighty-five thousand dollars. That's net. The money that we use, that we fund or we raise, funds different grant requests to local nonprofits, and several of them are here today. Both the Buellton and the Solvang Senior Centers, the Solvang Festival Theater, People Helping People, Elverhorn Museum, Veggie Rescue, Nature Track, the Friendship House, and several of those are also senior organizations, which I know is a priority for you. So the money we, that you provide a grant to us, we're able to return that back to the community. Last year, or the last couple of years for COVID, we were able to give out over fifty-thousand dollars for different food programs like Bethania. So we're just here to ask that you provide us a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant this year, which will help pay for the fireworks. They have gone up to over thirty thousand, but expenses are going up as we've been talking, and there was an issue about security. We will have seven security guards that we hire, and I am talking with Lieutenant Valencia right now about sheriff enforcement. So I want to thank you for all your past report, or support, and I think together we can put on another fabulous Fourth of July celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak? We have, okay. Madrid, Ms. Madrid?
Hi.
There you are.
I raised my hand, and I was checking all the unmute buttons. Excuse me. But hi, thank you. I am here to represent the Danish Days Foundation as a group of dedicated people who really want to celebrate and carry on Danish heritage and traditions for our want to celebrate and carry on Danish heritage and traditions for our town and for all of the tourists and travelers who come to see us. We were not able to have the festival in 2020 due to COVID, and really 2021 as well because of the remnants of that. We finally were able to bring it back last year for 2022, and we heard from a lot of people that it was incredible. It was really nice to be back. It was wonderful to celebrate. We had an incredible turnout and incredible, successful year. We do need your help to continue this festival, to help cover, again, the increasing costs of rentals, of supplies, of entertainment, of everything possible to make the festival happen. And so, we just, we thank you and are super grateful for any and all funds that you're able to give us.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else on Zoom? That was it. All right. Okay, then we'll end the public comment and come back to the council for comments, discussion, motions. Please.
With your indulgence, I'd like to add the Solvang Arts and Music Grant application to Table 1, and it's full capacity, $6,000.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, do we need to say that collectively, that we agree to do that, or is that just part of the motion, or how do we do this properly?
Well, I think as long as it's clear what the end result is with the budget overall, you can adopt it as one motion, but it needs to be clear in that motion that you're including X, including Y, and excluding Z if you happen to exclude Z.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments, counsel?
So, do we need to restate that then, Dave? That we're adding Solving Arts and Music for $6,000 for a total budget impact of $316,000 instead of $310? Is that what we need to do?
So, I hate to be obtuse on this one, but until the council as a whole decides that it wants to do that, that's the view of one council member. It sounds like everyone's interested in it.
So can I second what Dave Brown wants to do then?
Yeah, it's not so much a formal motion. What I'm saying is, when you come to the ultimate resolution of approving the mid-year cycle budget modifications, you say, "I move to approve the mid-cycle budget modifications as presented by staff with the following additions."
That's what we need.
Okay.
And if you don't agree with all of them, then you say, "I move to approve the mid-cycle budget modifications minus the ones described and adding the following ones."
So I'm going to take from what Dave has just offered and make a motion to approve the Human Services Grant funding, but ask that the mid-cycle budget come back to the council for clarification after we made some of the requests earlier in the conversation. So approve half of it and request that the staff bring back the mid-cycle budget review after looking harder at some of the line items we asked for revisited on. And that would mean we would approve Table 1 with the addition of the Solving Arts and Music Foundation for a total budget of $316,000 in grant funding.
Yes, sir.
We're not asking you to approve the budget at this point. We're asking you to provide staff direction. So what I would suggest is that you maybe break this up, and you say, "Approve the Human Services Grant, recommend it forward into the budget that will be adopted at the next meeting." And then if you have specific concerns or things you want to modify in the rest of it, then give that direction to us so that we can bring that as part of the budget adoption process at the next meeting.
That's the point I was trying to get across, is that the modifications that are being recommended in there, you give direction, because ultimately, it's coming back at the next meeting. But as long as it's clear to staff, and it sounds to me like Table 1 plus the $6,000 is the consensus of the council. But if council has direction on the other modifications, if you're looking to have them brought back for further clarification, I think staff can provide that clarification? Or, yeah? And I apologize, I'm not involved in a day-to-day basis on the budgeting portion of this. I'm just looking to make a motion, a crafted motion, that you will be able to put together and give staff clear direction on it. Still not sure we know how to do that.
And I would request that, you know, specifically, I mean, I know there were some concerns about the park and rec director position, for instance, and/or the marketing manager. So if those are the concerns, then we will do our best to address those, but if there's other things, we'd like to know what they are.
Question? Yes, sir.
So we are not going line by line for everybody that's asking for money tonight to say, "Yes, approve, disapprove," et cetera?
That would be part of the Table 1 that would be recommended to move forward.
Okay.
I mean, unless you want to withdraw something, you know, like Dave suggested, exclude something.
So, go ahead. Well, okay. This is what came out of that meeting before for the grant funding. And part of it was Human Services, part of it was marketing or tourism-related. And they want to add the $6,000 for the Arts and Music, which is fine.
Can I, may I ask a question of one of the audience members? Ellen, Senior Center?
Yeah.
Would, you mentioned books for your members?
We have a book club, yes.
The book, would a donation of 500 books help you out?
Well, what we do, we could be.
I'm offering.
Well, I'm not on. I can yell.
To either sell or give to, or share with your members?
But that would be very nice, yes.
And I'll get together with you after this.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we do, our book club, I do have to tell you, we get our books from the Solvang Library. We get 10 or 12 books.
I don't want to compete with anybody.
No, no, no.
I've got a library of like 5,000 books. I'd be happy to give you 500.
Okay.
To either sell or share with your, with the Senior Center.
Great.
Or become part of the fireworks display.
We'll talk later.
Okay. Well, and the book club is, they all obviously read the same book. It's like a homework assignment, and then they discuss it.
I only want to be sorry.
We'll take your books. Thank you.
We'll talk.
Yes, sir.
If it would be beneficial about how we went about this, we could give a quick overview, but you've heard from everybody tonight, and so it would be my recommendation to staff to move forward with the Table 1, including item for the Solving Arts and Music Grant for $6,000.
Is that a motion? Because I'll second it. I'll second it. If you make it.
Yes. Table 1. Approval of Table 1, including the...
The Arts and Music.
Arts and Music.
Yeah.
Yeah. Second. Can we do it that way? We were separating, because that's what you suggested we should do.
Yeah, we'll do it that, that much of it that way. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Abstain.
No.
Councilmember Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Infante?
Yes.
Motion passes 3, 1, no one recused, or yes, one recused.
You recuse yourself from your own motion?
Well, he's got a conflict.
Oh, gosh.
And just to be clear, if you're abstaining because of a conflict, and it's an FPPC conflict, you should declare that, but it just said abstain, so you're just marked as not voting on it. If there was a conflict, though, you should declare what type that is, though, if it is an FPPC conflict.
Yeah, I'll refuse myself. My wife is hired by the Addag At Home Program.
Oh.
Makes sense now? Yeah, okay. Okay, so that one went through. Now, we're going to do, the rest of this is a matter of asking for it to come back. Is that what I understand?
Well, it's all coming back. Even this, even the grant funding is coming back, because you're not, you have an adopted budget. But what we're doing is making modifications to that adopted budget, and the grant funding was not included, the second year of the grant funding was not included. That's why we had a whole other process this year. But the, we're looking for direction. We had the staff recommendation, the AdHOC committee generally agreed with what the staff recommended. Like I said a little while ago, it's now coming before the full council for discussion, direction, clarification, et cetera, so that when we come back in two weeks, we have clear understanding of what the council wants.
Concerned with.
So that we can adopt the changes to the budget that begin on July 1.
Okay, so we need to list to you what we would like to adjust, change, or look at in any case.
That would be very helpful, yes.
Well, then, if that's the case, the concerns that I have are with the staff that we want on board, the people that we want to hire, I just want to know what they do and how they will prove the services of the city to residents.
Do we have a job description for the director for Parks and Rec? Okay.
Yes.
With that, maybe that'll help.
That's what I was going to say.
That'd be great, yeah.
We can include that, yes.
Okay. The other thing we are going to discuss next meeting is marketing manager.
Right, that was going to be a separate item, but yeah.
Good, it has to be, because we haven't decided on what to do with that yet. The other thing that I haven't seen is an events coordinator, unless that becomes part of the Parks and Rec director position or something of that nature.
That will be under the Park and Rec Director, and overseen by the Park and Rec Director, if that's where, what position you guys decide to fill, and the rec, either the rec coordinator or the senior rec coordinator would fulfill those duties.
Wendy, just on that point, can you, since we've asked for the job description for the director, could we contrast that with a job description for supervisor and coordinator for recreation, so we understand what everybody's doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And along with the marketing manager, if you guys decide to lower that position, then right now it's budgeted as a marketing manager, so it'll just decrease the staff expenses.
Would it be helpful to have like an organization chart?
Yes.
As it existed prior to, as I refer to it, the bloodletting, and what it currently is, and what it would look like with these proposed changes?
I would appreciate that, myself.
The Purge?
The Purge.
Stalin.
Also, if you could include ranges within our, within a county for the same position, that would give a benchmark.
Yeah, that was a great point.
Be a benchmark that we're looking for.
On what other cities are paying for the similar position.
We're in the process of doing a salary survey for most of these positions. We could share what we received. I don't know if we have for the rec director, but I know we have for most of the other ones.
Randy, this was, I think it was a great suggestion from Jillian, I think. The point was, can we look at other recent postings and recent hires in cities like ours of similar size and scope, and what were their rec director salary hired into, at what values and what range, so we can know that we are certainly competitive or not overpaying?
Yes, we can do that.
My only caution would be, we have to publish this agenda in a week, and that's kind of a tall order to try and gather a lot of that kind of information in only a week. We will do our best.
That's because we don't have enough staff.
That's part of the issue, yes.
It is.
Okay. Other comments or requests? In that case, I believe we need a motion to return to this next meeting? No?
Staff direction.
It goes. Staff direction. Staff direction. You got a large direction, I believe, right?
Yes. So basically, the rest of the issues you're okay with, you're just mostly concerned about the recommended staffing changes.
There's one more thing. Do we have any data yet? Any, I think we started collecting tax revenue on Measure U in April. Is that right?
April 1st, yeah.
It began in April, but...
Well, it's hit.
We won't see it until...
It's like a 30-day delay.
...in July.
Yeah.
However, we did have a check for $1,278. That was DMV fees that are pre, like, paid early. So I contacted the state, I'm like, oh, like, what do we do with this? Like, it hasn't started as of, you know, April 1st, and she said it was DMV fees. So we have $1,278 of Measure U money.
Yep, it's Measure U money.
Can you buy a car in Solvang?
No, but if you buy a car in Buellton and you live in Solvang, you'll pay Solvang sales tax.
Got it.
And the Solvang sales tax includes now the 1% addition, and that's what happened, is DMV put that on there prematurely. Yay.
Nice. Not prematurely, they just paid it early, so if it's due like in May or June, April, May or June, and they pay it, so if it's due May or June and they pay it in April, then it's paid early, so that's why we got it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting stuff, huh? Taxes.
Okay.
All right. Are we, are we done with that then? You have all of the stuff you need from us? Do you have everything you need from us to proceed?
Yes. We have direction from council to include the Solving Arts and Music for $6,000. And then we will bring back to you the Park and Rec job descriptions, three of them, and the org chart prior to us getting here, and then the salary ranges within the county for the Park and Rec Director position.
Thank you very much. All right. That took us a little bit of time. Shall we go on to 6B then? Please, Ms. City Clerk.
Discussion and possible action to approve Amendment 3 to the agreement with Santa Barbara County for Law Enforcement Services in the monthly amount not to exceed $207,292 and to extend the term to September 29, 2023, and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm scrolling through 1,500 pages to get to that. Thank you. So, thank you. As you're aware from past discussions with staff, the city has been engaged in longstanding negotiations with Santa Barbara County for Law Enforcement Services. We are currently involved in that process. Mr. Murphy and I have been on more phone calls than I care to count at this point, and we are making progress. I would like to say that we are very close to being completed. We are not. As such, the four contract cities that receive contract law enforcement services from the county and the county have all agreed to put together a 90-day extension of the current situation with a cost escalator, and if costs later turn out to be different when we finally negotiate a contract, then we can adjust it at that point. But in order to continue providing law enforcement services after June 30th this year, we are recommending that the council approve this extension. It is a 90-day extension through September 29th, 2023, in a monthly amount of $207,292. We are going to be looking at potentially a completely different cost model in the new agreement. We're still waiting for the language of the agreement from the county, and once we have that, we'll be in a better position to gauge whether or not September 29th, 2023 is a realistic date for the successor contract. That is the assumption we're working on. But the other, at least two of the other cities have already approved the extension. The County Board of Supervisors has approved the extension, and I believe Galita is considering it this evening as well as we are. So the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the 90-day extension of the current law enforcement services contract with the county, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, what was CARP's position on this?
All the cities are in favor of the extension.
We just went over this. Beyond the term, is there any other changes to the contract?
No, it's just an extension. There is that provision, though. I want to make it clear that there is... it clear that there is a provision in there that there is an escalator going to be, um, in there, and I'm trying to find the exact language of the escalator, but I think it's 7.4.
It was language where, if we agreed to this percentage increase, which is still small, but it stays, this stays, uh, flat, but in this agreement, if we agree to this 90-day extension, whatever, if we were to come to agreement with the sheriff's department, um, but between now and the, the 90-day extension, it's agreed that this is not a precursor to define what we would, plus or minus, or binding.
Is there a clawback, I guess, if we're funds?
There's an opportunity to, if, if, so we can go over, under. That's the, that's the only thing I saw, Dave, is that what you were searching for?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the general concept of it.
Where does this, where does this end?
Yeah, good question.
My crystal ball's not that shiny, unfortunately. Um, I, I would love to be able to provide this council certainty on this contract. It is, uh, a source of continuing frustration that we're not there yet.
Yeah, I'm just baffled because we've just been over this, and now we're going back to it again and again and again.
Did you say bent over this?
I, I mean, yeah, it's not inaccurate.
Yes, sir.
So I was gonna point out, the increase, this tentative agreement or this extension increases our monthly, uh, cost about $14,000. Um, and as was pointed out, if the final agreement ends up more than $14,000, we're gonna owe the county some money. If it ends up less, which I highly doubt that it will, they will owe us some money. Um, and it is, uh, only for the 90 days. We had discussions today about, uh, tolerance or, or appetite for a multi-year agreement. Um, it seems to be gaining some traction, so I'm optimistic when we do come with a final agreement, it will be for more than one year. As I told, as I told the group earlier today, as much as I like seeing all your faces on my computer, I'd rather not see them as frequently as I do. So it would be nice to be able to have a multi-year agreement.
Any other questions of staff report?
As much as I respect law enforcement, this is like extortion.
I don't think anybody disputes that, that we want to come to an agreement, but is there, is there any more transparency in the, uh, ju, uh, cost justification?
The short answer to your question is yes, there is more transparency. Um, is there enough for the contract cities to have figured it all out yet? I would say that's probably a no.
It's hocus pocus. I mean, it's just, this is really, really, really disturbing.
Okay.
How do you all vote last election?
I want to know that.
Yes, sir.
They're telling us what they're putting in the, in the stew. Uh, we're just not agreeing with all of the ingredients.
I just also want to know that we really still don't have, uh, the proverbial gun to our head. Can we extend again if we had to?
So...
Could we extend past September?
We can, we can seek an extension. Whether the county will grant it is another question.
There's no language that says we...
No.
Okay.
There is nothing that compels the county to extend another time. Um, and there have been discussions about what if, um, what if the county doesn't extend? Um, I think they've committed to provide emergency services, but they might not be providing the same level of services, uh, to which the four contract cities have become accustomed. Um, that question hasn't been resolved satisfactorily, but, um, I don't want to, you know, put the public, public into a panic that there won't be any patrolling, uh, but by, by the very nature of the number of deputies that are there. Um, if something happens, there's going to be some kind of a response. I just can't tell you to what level it's going to be.
This, this whole thing reeks of, what are you gonna do about it?
Yeah.
You know, and that, that really, really, really bothers me because we've been going through this for four years now. And it's just, I mean, what are we gonna do? We're not gonna say...
Well, one of the things we could do was suggested by the Buellton Mayor, Dave.
All ears.
So we form a joint police force between the two cities.
Yeah, and, and the, we've talked about that before, and the costs are just so astronomical, so...
Other than that?
Just like, we're, we're held hostage with this.
You're right.
And the taxpayers are the ones that suffer. We're a low crime area, and we're at the total mercy of the sheriff to say, do this or we're done. I, and, you know, I, this is the proverbial rock and a hard place that I've ever, ever seen. We're stuck with the sheriff, and we have to, you know, what are we gonna do? Say no?
Have Buellton allowed that?
Okay, and, you know, get a, a community vigilante patrol? It's not gonna happen. Like, we used to have a, we used to have a community fire department. Uh, we can't do that with law enforcement, so what are our options?
Not a lot.
Yeah, it, it's a difficult thing.
And I, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. I'm, I adore, uh, Sergeant Valencia, and I adore Lieutenant Valencia, and, and the previous, I mean, they're all great, great gods.
This should not fall at the feet of the deputies who are providing the service.
Exactly.
This is a contractual issue between public entities. Um, the, the line-level deputies have no say in this.
I understand that, and I respect them immensely.
And so, I want to be clear that they, they're not, they're not constituting a law.
They're soldiers.
Yeah.
And the generals are telling them what to do, and, and, you know, they're gonna do what the, I get it.
Yeah, but I would say all the contract...
That's all I'm saying, I'm just frustrated.
Yeah, all the contract cities are working very hard on this. I mean, like I said, the number of phone calls that we've had, um, I, I've lost count. Um, and we have not only the communications with the county on, on these large negotiation sessions, we have, um, post hoc, or, um, you know, we have the debrief sessions with just the contract city so that we can figure out, okay, what did we hear? Um, where are we going? The negotiations, um, sessions, um, are friendly. I mean, they're not contentious, I would say. It's just, we have still a lot of questions to resolve. Um, and we're, we're further along than we were three months ago, but we're still looking at having to extend in a contract that we thought that we would have a final version, uh, instead of having to extend.
Were you about to go post hoc, ergo proctor hoc?
Uh, no, my Latin left when I graduated law school.
I knew where you were headed.
Pluribus onum, I read that off the coinage. I don't...
It drew me in, okay. It's frustrating.
Okay, so at this point, um, public comment? No? Uh, do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Yeah? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Um, so at this point, final comments, or do we have a motion to accept this, approve this Amendment 3 to the agreement with Santa Barbara County Law Enforcement?
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment 3 to the agreement with Santa Barbara County for Law Enforcement Services and the aforementioned amount, not to exceed it.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Councilmember Claudia Rona?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Infante?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Symbolic.
Okay, let's go to item 6C, please.
Who wants to be Batman?
Discussion and possible action regarding partnering with the Santa Barbara County to conduct voter support polling for levying a countywide tax to support library funding.
Do you have a staff report on this?
I do, briefly.
Please give it to us.
So, the county wants to know if, uh, if the city will be supportive of their effort to poll our larger community about a library tax, potential library tax. The, the potential cost of it is a mere $852 would be our share, um, out of a $60,000 approximated cost. It, I was told if it's gonna cost more than $60,000, that they, the county would eat it. Uh, if it would be less, we would get our proportionate reduction. Uh, it will require 100% of the jurisdictions to participate, otherwise it won't happen. So they were looking for our support, and although the $852 is clearly within my spending limit, I felt it was, uh, important, since it is more or less a policy thing, um, to get the council's input.
Thank you very much.
Had to change my ashtray.
Can we get the sheriff's department to pay for that?
Okay, so, uh, questions of staff report? No?
We're the people.
Public comments? Karen, we're, we're looking for something. No?
Well, Randy, how does, how does the polling get executed? How does the polling get executed, and in what timeframe?
Uh, I don't know. I would assume it would be next fiscal year because we're at the beginning of this one.
But it seems to me that it would cost a lot more just for the voting of this thing than it, than what they're gonna gain.
Maybe it's an online poll?
This, as I understood, it was simply a polling, not an actual vote.
Okay.
So it would be some kind of a survey that they would do.
I see.
Opinion polling as opposed to voting polling.
Yeah.
Different polling.
SurveyMonkey.com or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so bottom line to me, what is the library, our local library hoping to benefit from this? And I'm sorry for being dense.
Well, I, can I assume that we, if there's a countywide tax, we, that our library would get some of that tax money?
Right, they would get a proportional share.
So what we're trying to do is figure out if we're willing to pay for polling to see if they'll pay the tax.
Is the larger community willing to pay, uh, uh, probably a sales tax? I don't know. They didn't specify, and there may be part of the polling they do to determine what there is a tolerance for, is that a sales tax, is the bump in property tax?
But that would have to go on the ballot, though.
Right. It would, it would all have to be voted on.
Okay, that's fine.
This is just basically a survey.
Just a poll to see what...
To see, is there a tolerance for it? Um, and if so, then it would come forward in some kind of a measure.
Comments?
How do you feel about that, Robert?
I'm mixed. I mean, I, I mean, libraries are my passion, books are my passion, although I'm kind of a foul of the library right now with previous month's events. Um...
Okay, but...
I, I support libraries immensely, so...
So, do you want to make a motion to approve that we do this?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Wait, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
No, that's, yes. Yes, that's a yes. Let it to the voters, let them decide. I'm, that's the way it should be.
Councilmember Claudia Rona?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Infante?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so we're down to the AB 1234 reports. Anybody have any? I do. Yeah, did you meet with the ambassador later? Yeah, exactly that. Um, let me, yes, and that's exactly what I need to report on for a couple of reasons. One was, uh, yeah, after the, uh, the ribbon cutting, we went to the Karazov Vineyard to see their solar system and irrigation system and talk about water, uh, which was an interesting discussion, uh, about GSA things. And then there was an all-electric tractor that was the most stunning thing I've ever seen. It'll run autonomously. You can program the thing and it'll run around the yard and do stuff. You know, it'll carry your water or, or irrigation stuff, and, and so part of the AB 1234 is, is because of that, I had to go taste their wine. So...
Oh!
That was important. That was part of the process.
Occupational hazard.
And then, we all went to dinner at the house of a gentleman who lives on top of a hill that had a view of San Andres. It was absolutely stunning. He happens to be the, I think he's the chairman of the board of the AFSM, AFSMK. SMK is the Danish Art Museum, and AF is the American Friends of the SMK. Um, and, and this guy, it, it is, his last little event he told us about was he bought a company for 15 million, sold it a year later for 100 million. This guy, uh, has this magnificent home up at the top, and, and we ate and drank wine. Imagine that. Um, and, and had a, had a wonderful time up at his house on the top of this mountain. Um, so I need to report that to you all. It did have, what, a million-dollar view. It was amazing. It was just stunning. Uh, they had entertainment. They had every, this was a dinner like I have never been to before. It was just phenomenal. Um, okay, all of that aside, that's it for the evening?
I have one thing. At the risk of going off script, I don't, do not understand why does the tax area's responsibility to pay for other people's good deeds?
Like what? Oh, yeah, you're such a curmudgeon. Oh, one, let me go one other thing. Um, and I, I need help. Uh, Tracy has gone. The Chamber of Commerce is, we're going to have a State of the City. I believe the date is August 9th.
Ooh.
Um, so it's, it's gonna be coming up here in a while. Uh, we need to do some planning on what that's gonna be. I believe it's gonna be held at the Cork, uh, the, the court, what is it?
What I heard, yeah.
The house, right? Craft House, that's the name. Thank you very much.
Do you want to do it annually?
Yeah. Uh, and this is, this, for this year, and, and we're gonna do it, but, but Tracy is, is managing the whole thing. She's putting it all on. I think we're gonna have, uh, one of our senators here to speak. We're gonna have...
State Senator?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Who is it that, do you remember who she said was gonna be there?
Either Bennett or Limon.
I, I, no, I was thinking it was, no, I'm not sure. I, I don't recall, so I don't even want to try.
Salute?
Yeah, I just say the wrong name. But, 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 but we need, you and I need to plan what's gonna be presented and everything else. You have a meme.
Yes!
I think that's it. Ladies and gentlemen, we are con, concluding this meeting at 9:00 PM.